To call the meeting to order. All board members are present. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chairperson, I love saying that. I make a motion that we pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, I think you have set the standards for Madam Chairperson.
Thank you.
Your comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Board Committee reports policy.
No meeting.
We just have the second reading of the policies on our consent agenda. Southwest Metro.
Southwest Metro does not meet during the month of December unless there would be something that would necessitate a special meeting.
CPAC?
No CPAC meeting was scheduled either.
Community Ed.
We, I didn't lie last time. We had a problem. We got the brochures back and just before they sent them out, there was about three errors on different pages. So they went out today, finally. And the community ed apologized for that. On the compulsory instruction report, there are 309 non-public schools in the New Prague system. And there are 130 homeschool students in the district. The Minnesota Department of Public Safety Annual Driver's Education Report was given submitted this week. 385 students are trained in classroom instruction this year and 299 for behind the wheel in our program. Elementary basketball is starting up on Saturday mornings, kindergarten through third grade. And Merry Christmas from the community ed to everybody out there.
Thank you.
Wellness Committee.
Wellness.
Any early childhood?
No.
All right, up to the superintendent report.
Okay, just want to, we sent an email out to Raven Stream staff today and then also you should have received it along with our administrative team. But just want to make a public comment here about Pat Pribble, our principal, elementary principal at Raven Stream, suffered a heart attack this weekend. And he's up at Abbott Northwestern right now. He had a angioplasty this morning where they put stents into an artery that was 90% blocked. So he's in stable condition, doing his finest can be. And I'm not sure how long he'll be up there, but just want to let everyone know to have him. And your thoughts and prayers. So I'll be going up there. I was up there Sunday to visit and I'm going up there tomorrow too. So I'll keep everyone updated on that. Right now, we've got Tony Boothey, Director of Educational Services, spending time at Raven Stream and filling in for Pat while he's gone. Another note, I just want to again publicly recognize and thank our three outgoing board members. Sherry Brooks, who's been a board member for nine years, Don Dvorak, and Jerry Willarius for the past 13 years. I can't thank you enough for your leadership for this school district. Been wonderful to work with. For me, as back when I started as a new superintendent, I mean, I couldn't ask for a better school board and always have put kids first in your decisions. And just appreciate that. And I know many people think the same thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Don's already volunteered to be on a couple committees for me too.
Is he going to coach something too? All right. First action item, fiscal year 1819 revised budget.
Okay, so just as a reminder, we pass our preliminary budget in June of every year. We have to by statute have a board approved budget before the start of the fiscal year. And then we do a revised budget in December. The revised budget includes changes mainly in salary and benefit changes because in June we don't always know who our final staff is going to be for the year. There's lots of changes that take place over the summer. So this is kind of the final budget for the year. Just to summarize some of the main changes, there are other changes, but these are worth noting. We did update enrollment to the current projections, which actually decreased 16 APUs or about $100,000 in revenue. That was based on the enrollment projections that I presented in October. Right now, as far as how we're doing against those enrollment projections, we are about 20 students ahead of those projections, which is good. But I always allow for some decline through the year. Special ed revenue offset that decrease plus, so I increased that revenue projection by $150,000 based on an updated projection by MDE. That of course is very variable because a lot of it has to do with the tuition students that we send mainly to Southwest Metro Intermediate District. And that can change a lot from year to year, but this is the best estimate that I have. We also included the TRA increase. If you recall, when I presented the preliminary budget, there was a statutory change increase in TRA employer contributions, but that is mostly offset by a revenue increase, which is also reflected in the revised budget. Then we update for current salary and benefit costs for all the staff. We do, I did include the language facilitator, which we'll be talking about in a couple of agenda items for an MOU to serve a new student in our district that just started last week. Gymnastics center, we have a new lease that you approved in August, I believe. And that is at the gymnastics center. This is offset by a lease levy, but I've included the expense in the revised budget. I reduced the contingency from 200,000 to 100,000 just because we've never used that contingency, all that contingency. And I just think $100,000 contingency is probably sufficient. Did include ACT prep curriculum and pre-test software. This is something that Nicole Adams and Marin Baller have researched based on the scores that were presented at the last board meeting for the ACT scores. We believe this will help us in that area. We also have an implementation fee and three months of license fees for new performance management, clock hour tracking, and professional development course management that replaces Keep Certified. And also, we have a program or software package called Perform. And we are switching to a new software program for these two that is consistent with the software that we use for absence management and our time tracking software. And I reallocated some tech capital to curriculum capital for what we think is going to be an additional curriculum need that the board will hear about after the first of the year. So this is an updated revenue and expense for the total budget. We have revenues of 44.5 million and expenses of about 45 million, 45.1 million. And then for unassigned, we have revenue of about 41.3 million and expenses of about 42.5 million. And if you'll just remember that typically I budget very conservatively for both revenue and expenses. Last year, we came in about a percent higher on the revenue side and about 2% lower on the expense side. So I always try to budget conservatively. This shows our general fund balance history. Both our, the blue bar is the total fund balance and the red bar is the unassigned fund balance. And you can see it reached its peak in fiscal year 1516 and has been declining very slowly since then. These are our committed accounts and reserved accounts. We expect our staff development reserve to stay at zero. LTFM will take a huge increase because of the fully implementation of that new levy and aid. Operating capital will take a slight decrease. Gifted and talented will decrease due to the staffing we've put in that program the last couple of years. Safe schools will increase slightly and severance will probably decrease slightly. Nutritious and community services funds, nutrition services, we ended the year last year at $343,000 reserve. We expect that to go up slightly to $357,000. Unity services, we ended up at 490 last year and expect that to increase to about 551,000. That is my presentation. The full budget document is attached in board docs. You had that available for your review starting last Thursday, which gives much more detail. Any questions at all?
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the revised budget?
Bill moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Truth and taxation. Guess you're still up, huh?
Yeah. So let's go right into truth and taxation. So just as a reminder, that a public meeting must be held on a proposed tax levy and must include a discussion of the taxes payable for the next calendar year, in this case 2019. Excuse me, a discussion of the current year budget, which I just did, and an opportunity for public comment. The sources of revenue, just want to give a brief overview first. About 85% of our revenue in the general fund comes from the state and about 10% comes from local property tax. So we are talking tonight just about 10% of our general fund revenue budget. For all operating funds, however, it's only, state aid counts for 66% and 21% is property tax levy. That's because when you add Fund VII, that includes all of our bond referendums for our schools, our, the recent building project that we did. So that's why that mix changes so much. So how are local school taxes determined? There are several different kinds of levies. We have voter approved levies, which are bonds for building projects. And also our voter approved operating levy, which voters just approved last year for four, six years. And then we have some levies that are school board decisions. Special levy authority includes like facility leases, reemployment insurance, reemployment payments. And then we have board approved and local optional revenue, which actually was deducted from a voter approved operating levy that had been approved many years ago. But those two types of levies are school board decisions. Then we have levies that are set by state formula. They include equity, operating capital, transition, community service, safe schools, long-term facility maintenance, career tech, and student achievement. And then note that the levies in red are equalized levies. So this means that we, the state calculates our total revenue in a certain category such as long-term facilities maintenance and then uses a formula to decide how much of that revenue is paid by local taxpayers in the form of a levy or by state aid. And the goal is to equalize impact to local property tax owners based on a market value per student. So you have very property-rich districts that have a lot of industry and then you have more property-poor districts that don't have a lot of industry and it attempts to equalize that, the effect on the local taxpayer. Some factors contributing to this year's levy change. First of all, our adjusted net tax capacity increased 8.6% and our referendum market value increased 6.4%. So depending upon your individual property and whether you own agricultural, commercial, residential, your property value probably increased this year, some more significantly than others. But an overall increase in market value decreases state aid and increases local levy for equalized levies, those levies in red from the prior slide. And so that means as a general rule, are the taxpayer burden increased from the last levy to this levy and they're, because there's less being paid in state aid. We had an increase of pupil units, which automatically increases our levy because a lot of our levies are based on student count. We also have a new levy this year, an OPEB levy, which we are newly eligible to levy. And this includes post-employment benefits. We have very few post-employment benefits compared to most districts, but we do have some. And this allows us, now that we've sunset all of our post-employment benefits, it allows us to levy for prior year OPEB payments that the district has made. Also, our debt schedules increased slightly due to just variations in the debt schedule, but we also had a decrease in equalization aid on our debt service payments from the state. We also had some negative prior year adjustments in the general fund, but we had some positive prior year adjustments in Fund IV, which are kids company, school age childcare costs. I've talked about this in the past. It allows us to hire extra staff to work with our children in our kids company, school age childcare program. And then of course, the 40% tax credit for ag land and bond referendum continues. Last year was the first year of that. We look at our general fund levy. Our general fund levy actually decreased $230,000 this year, which is a 4.3% decrease. The biggest reason for the decrease is that those prior year adjustments, we had some large prior year adjustments up the year before and now there, we had a negative adjustment. Community service fund is actually increasing $25,000 or a little over 6%. And again, a lot of that is due to the prior year adjustments for that, the school age childcare prior year adjustment. And debt service fund is increasing almost 2% or $150,000. And that's for the reasons that I explained earlier. So our total levy is actually decreasing about $56,000, which is a minus 0.42%. And you see the variations there. The general fund decreased, community service and debt service both increased. This shows just a picture of what our levies have been like over the last about 10 years. Again, you see that total purple line staying very stable from the year before. Just a quick picture of how many are voter approved versus board approved. And the voter approved is 61%, which again, it's the operating levy as well as all of our bond projects that are being paid for out of our debt service fund. Levy by fund, 59% is debt service, again for those bonds, 38% is the general fund and 3% is community services. Estimated tax impact, if your home was valued at $20,400 and had no change from the prior year, which we know isn't true, but that's about the only way you can compare apples to apples, property taxes would actually decrease $70 a year or about 10%. And this information's from the Scott County What If that they send me every year.
200,400.
What did I say?
20,000.
Oh, sorry.
I want that house.
Yep, yep. Then the budget as I presented in the prior agenda item. And the next steps would be that the public has an opportunity to give feedback to the school board. You then certify the final levy. The county auditor calculates the final tax bills and then the county starts collecting the levy in April and May of 2019. And so we're asking that the board certify the levy as presented at $13,374,350.
If I remember correctly, last year we had an increase of 12% and that was because of the operating levy, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Probably more than anything, so.
Yep.
It's good to see we're going, taking a minus on it a little bit, that helps.
Yeah. So any questions or anybody from the audience is welcome to give input or questions.
Any questions from the audience or board members?
Mary, now is your chance.
All right. Thanks, Sandy. Get a motion to approve the levy?
I'll make a motion to approve the levy.
Second.
At the?
At the $13,374,350 amount. Minus.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. SEIU paraprofessional MOU.
Okay. So as I mentioned in the budget presentation, we did have a new student move into our district from another district and has a special kind of staff member assigned to the student called a language facilitator. And this position would be, I figure, covered by the paraprofessional unit represented by SEIU Local 284. In that contract, we have paraprofessionals, we have a CSPA, which is certified speech, and we have building nurses. And we didn't have anything called a language facilitator. It's really higher level than a regular para, requires some special skills in the area of sign language as well as curriculum modification for instructing the student. So I worked with SEIU internally and our external rep and with Amy Johnson to come up with this MOU to set a rate of pay for this person at $18 per hour. And then we would discuss other terms and conditions relating to the salary when we do negotiations, probably starting this summer, next summer. So just need approval. You see the SEIU contract organizer did approve that and just looking for some approval tonight to be able to hire this person at this pay rate.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed MOU.
I'll second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Next item, Level Three grievance. The negotiation committee heard a Level Three grievance from a custodian represented by SEIU Local 284 this past week. Level one and level two grievances were filed timely and both were denied. Based on the information we heard in the hearing, we are recommending to the full board that we deny the Level Three grievance filed pursuant to the master agreement for custodial staff represented by SEIU Local 284 and respond to the grievance on behalf of the board.
I'll make a motion, we deny this Level Three grievance.
I'll second it. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. You have a resolution for the polling places?
Yes, I have a resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for which school district elections are not held on the day of a statewide election. Do I have a motion to consider this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Be it resolved that each combined polling place must be a place that has been adequately designated by a county or municipality, the following combined polling places are established to serve precincts specified for all school districts, special and general elections not held on the same day as the statewide election. St. Patrick's Social Hall in Jordan, Elko New Market Area Hall in Elko New Market, Lonsdale City Hall in Lonsdale, Wheatland Town Hall in Vesely, St. Wenceslas Parish Activity Center in New Prague, and St. Wenceslas Parish Activity Center also in New Prague. Also, the polling pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the polling places will remain open for the voting for school district elections not held on the same day as a statewide election between the hours of 7:00 and 8:00 PM. How do you vote on this, Jerry?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Don? Dennis, yes, item passes.
I'd like to thank Don and Sherry and Jerry for all of your years of service on the board and wish you well. You can come join us any Monday you want.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the voters of our school district for allowing me to do this or trusting, trusting me to do this. It's been a real honor for 13 years. And I think the biggest thing I'll take away from it is probably the friendships I made over the last 13 years. I think I made a few friends. Maybe lost a few too, I don't know. But I think with the new friendships, we not only talked education, but agriculture and sports and politics. And to me, it was a very rewarding 13 years. So thanks again.
I'd like to thank all the support I got from stakeholders. At the time we got elected, there was a lot of disgust and the superintendent was leading the board instead of the right way. And I had a very unprofessional board member tell me if I think I can do something about it, then I should do something about it. So I signed up. The superintendent at that time called me in the office right away. And she was under the impression that she'd be gone in a year and she was. I think that Mr. Dipperner has done a fantastic job. Obviously, we passed three elementaries. We did a whole bunch of remodeling and everything else. Excellent job on the baseball field. Overall, I think that the people that voted, since I was over 2,000 at that time, I said I would represent them. I wouldn't make all my own decisions and I think most of them are happy that they voted for me. So thank you. And you are, Madam Chairman, you are just amazing.
I know. I don't know how I can, yeah. Yeah. Like Don said, I think it took the meek out of me these last nine years. So thank you. Thank you Superintendent Dipperner. I'll give you an ear hug. I have seen almost two of my kids go through the school system. One has and she's doing really well right now in college. And I don't know how I can thank the school district aside from volunteering or not running again. I'm a little older now, but it just chokes me up to know that she can call me up and say, Mom, I'm just taking a breather from my homework and I have a 10-page paper due and I'm on page nine and she's all happy. I mean, how, what more can I ask from the school district for that? I didn't mean to tear up. I had a list of all the things the district did the last nine years, but just having her call up on that Sunday and tell me and be so happy and that she still had six more pages to do and that, that's what I thank the school district for. And Sandy, you are amazing. You are just, you're an angel in disguise. Thank you for everything. You too, Janelle. I didn't think I'd have to make a, a can be a word, but I, I know I'll forget what I wanted to say, but I, I know we all are for the students. I know because when I read and I see other brochures from other school districts, I know where our hearts are and our heads. And that to me, that says it all. So.
I'll say a few words as well. Sherry, thank you so much for stepping forward and filling the spot that needed to be filled and then running again and helping the, helping the school board get towards at this present time, which is at a very high functioning level, just like Tim said. And Don, thank you so much for running. I'm happy that you were on the board. You've always been an advocate for the employees, always making sure that the ones that served our district well were recognized and rightfully so. You asked good questions and I think you had the best interest at heart for all your decisions that you made. And Jerry, I worked with a lot of school board members over the years and I must say that you have been one of the most astute board members in terms of knowing the issues and knowing the different ramifications of things that we had in front of us. And you never shot from the hip. You always made sure that you knew what you were talking about and you did your homework. And that's a very, very good, good trait to have and I really appreciated it. And I really appreciated the tough times that we had to deal with when, when things were not as good as they are now and the things that had to be corrected. And you did a great job of helping us correct the shortcomings that. And you did a great job of helping us correct the shortcomings that were there at that time. Thank you, all three of you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.